Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, June 22, 2021. A meeting announcement, council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be cable cast on the City Channel and live streamed on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube Channel. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, this is Kell Smith, President.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next order of business is proclamations, and we have one to be presented by Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1641. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh dishear by recognize the important contributions of immigrants and new Americans of the past, present, and future to our economy, culture, and society, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh dishear by proclaim June 2021 as Immigrant Heritage Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Councilwoman, did you have anything you want to add?
Sure, thanks, Madam President. I just wanted to mention that we're recognizing June as Immigrant Heritage Month, and the importance of that, I mean, there are a couple of different reasons that we wanted to highlight this. There are already existing people who are immigrants who call Pittsburgh home, and as we know, many of them have been fighting on the front lines against either through COVID or against COVID this past year. And as we also know, we need population growth in this region, and we need to boost our economy, and immigrants can do just that. They come in, start businesses, they can contribute to our economy, they attend our universities, and hopefully after that, we keep them here. And then aside from that, obviously, the benefits of just introducing new cultures, ideas, and skills to the region. So I really wanted to thank the Graduate Student Assembly at Carnegie Mellon University for raising this awareness and working with me to help raise this awareness and suggesting this proclamation. It's just always great to work with that group from the graduate students from Carnegie Mellon. So thanks to Council colleagues for your support.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And no further proclamations. We'll move on to the next order of business, which is public comment, and we have zero registered speakers today. So we'll move on to the next order of business, which is the presentation of papers, and we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
On the papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
No new papers.
Oh, I'm sorry, no new papers, Madam President.
Councilwoman, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1629, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soul Facilities Plan for the Allegheny Center Alliance Church 745 Union Place. Bill Number 1630, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 819, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Public Planning, Department of City Planning, in cooperation with the Director of the Department of Public Works, to accept funds from an Allegheny Regional Asset District in the amount of $500,000 to fund public art projects in Emerald View Park, Frick Park, Highland Park, Riverview Park, and Schinley Park to restate the recitals and further describe the use of funds. Bill Number 1631, Resolution Authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interest, if any, and into the following publicly owned properties in the Fifth Ward designated in the registry office of Allegheny County as blocks and lots located at 2333 and 2331 Center Avenue, respectively, Council District Number Six. Bill Number 1632, Resolution Approving an Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA and Tom Toms 24 Development LLC or a related entity for the sale of block and lots located at and surrounding 2178 Center Avenue and the Fifth Ward, Council District Number Six. Bill Number 1633, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into a Right-of-Entry Agreement with the URA and City Source Associates to allow the removal of a tree located on designated city property.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
He's out, Bill, today.
He's out today. And could we have Councilman O'Connor for Councilman Kraus? Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1634, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Michael A. Douglas in the Amount of $2,717.88 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to a Park Vehicle and Other Property Damage from a City-Sold Truck on January 21, 2020.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
I'm sorry, I'm having an issue with my thing, my phone today. No new papers, Madam President, thank you. Or no, I do have, I do have papers, sorry.
You have papers.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
That's okay.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1635, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into a Police Traffic Services Grand Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, Division of Highway Safety for the purpose of receiving funds in the amount of $380,057.10 that will be used for enforcement of drunk and impaired driving, as well as related outreach activities. Bill Number 1636, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a grand agreement with the Pennsylvania Auto Theft Prevention Authority for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of $291,142 that will be used to establish coordinate and fund activities to prevent combat and reduce auto theft. Bill Number 1640, Resolution Amending Resolution 412, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to execute relevant grant agreements to receive funding from the Allegheny County Health Department to develop a public health-informed diversion program and further providing for expenditures under the term of said agreement to increase the amount authorized by the grant agreement and the amount authorized for expenditures.
And Councilman, you have a waiver of Rule 8 for Bill 1640?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to waive the rules for 1640. Thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
All right, scrolling back down. No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development, and can I have Councilwoman Strasburger for Councilman Wilson?
Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1637, Resolution that the Mayor and Director of City Planning on behalf of the city are hereby authorized to enter into a professional services agreement for a public art project coordinator with Casey Dorr Cultural Productions LLC to administer, coordinate, and document the city's 2021 Art in Parks Program at a cost not to exceed $25,000. Bill Number 1638, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 CDBG Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by increasing various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, and Home Investment Partnership Program.
Thank you. And then for myself, I have one communications, communication.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1639, Communication from Kevin Paulis, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on behalf of the Department of Finance for Quiana Thomas per the active pay policy revised in June of 2018.
Can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
So moved.
This second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
And it's approved. And now we'll move on to unfinished business. Thank you, Councilwoman, for participating. It's, it's hard to turn your mic off and on in time to vote, I know. We will now move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1623, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for June 16, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1578, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of PMA Management Corporation in the amount of $16,920 in settlement of a claim for damage to a granite pillar at the entrance to the St. Michael Cemetery at 2729 South 18th Street by a City Public Works High Lift. Bill Number 1579, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property acquired by the City at Tax Sale, 2046 Lay Street, and thereafter authorizing the execution of a quick claim deed conveying all of the city's rights, title, and interest in and to said property to Pride Well LLC. Bill Number 1580, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Clerk to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the National Historical Publications and Records Commission's access to historical records, archival projects to enhance discoverability and access to Pittsburgh's archival collections, and further providing for in agreement and expenditures not to exceed $133,934. Bill Number 1581, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Clerk to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission's Historical and Archival Records Care Grant to scan and rehouse 26 volumes of City Council Minute Books and 74 volumes of Annex Bureau Books, and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $8,016. The grant requires a match from the city in the amount of $8,016 for a total project cost of $16,032.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. Oh, in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1624, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for June 16, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1619, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Pyrotechnical Fireworks Inc. for the display of a fireworks show in conjunction with the city's Fourth of July festivities at an amount not to exceed $80,000.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. Oh, in favor of their passage, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1625, Report of the Committee on Public Works for June 16, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1573, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in the amount of $172,502.26 for work in collaboration with the sawmill-run local production project. Bill Number 1574, Resolution Providing for a supplementary agreement with the Commonwealth Department of Transportation for local costs associated with the State Route 0028, Section 809 project, and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed $144,450. Bill Number 1601, Resolution Granting unto Charles Dees, your successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, a new AVA-compliant interest grant at 4748 Liberty Avenue, Eighth Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill Number 1620, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 CDBG Program, the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Carol Lee Recreation Center demolition and reconstruction by $928,567 and increasing remediation of condemned buildings by $858,567 and tree planting by $70,000.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. Oh, in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Can I have Councilwoman Strasburger for Councilman Wilson, please?
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1626, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for June 16, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1616, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 CDBG Program, the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program, so as to reduce Northside Cultural Collaborative by $10,000 and increase Northside Cultural Collaborative and Northside Northshore Chamber of Commerce by $10,000 and authorize a subsequent agreement.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. Oh, in favor of their passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Report of the Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management for June 16, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1608, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in favor of Ceridian HCM Inc. in the amount of $8,960 for professional software support hours provided to the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final, final action. Oh, in favor of their passage, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to our last committee of the day, Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1628, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for June 16, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1576, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soul Facilities Plan for the Cal Broad Place Project, Northside, near intersection of California Avenue and Kirk Road Street.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final, final action. Oh, in favor of the passage, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions, and I have a few meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June 21, council will meet for the Standing Committees Meeting at 10:00 a.m., chaired by Councilman Lavelle. Also, tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a cable cast post-agenda discussion on the Pittsburgh Public Schools, and that will be chaired by Councilman Burgess, I believe. And to register for tomorrow's council meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by 9:00 a.m. You may also register by calling 412-255-2138. Also, city residents and stakeholders are invited to share their input on the city's 2022 operating and capital budgets by taking surveys either online at www.ingage.pittsburghpa, as if it's one word, Pittsburghpa.gov/2022budgets, or by calling, the easiest way, 311. The capital budget survey is open through June 18, 2021, and the 2022 operating budget survey is open through July 11, 2021. Do we have anything for members?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Just one clarification on the first announcement you read Wednesday, but you said June 21, and tomorrow Wednesday is June 23. What was, if you could reread the first announcement, is that right, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, I, thank you for catching. My, my notes do say 21st. Tomorrow, meeting announcements tomorrow, Wednesday, June 23. Thank you for catching that. Council will meet for the Standing Committees Meeting at 10:00 a.m., and also tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 p.m. on June 23, council will hold a cable cast post-agenda discussion on the Pittsburgh Public Schools. Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything else for members? And I would just say, Councilwoman. Yes.
Okay, no, you want to go first? You can go first.
No, 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 please, please, go ahead.
Okay, no, no, you know, I just really wanted to take a moment to thank the Vice President for coming out to the Brookline Overbrook area yesterday. The excitement, the energy that it stirred up in the neighborhood was, was really great. People lined up, cameras. So, so it was really exciting, you know, and I really also wanted to take the opportunity to thank, you know, Public Works, you know, Public Works had that park looking so beautiful for her arrival. It really is, many of you I've had at this park, one of the most beautiful, small, but big park, you know, so. So it was really looking great, almost too well, because, you know, I think it, I lost some leverage in my parks tax, you know, task force deliberations, at least with Reverend Burgess, because he had commented how nice the park was. So I wanted to thank Public Works for that. You know, our Pittsburgh police leading the way for this entourage, you know, they did a fantastic job. They were really the first layer of security, and they couldn't have been nicer, greeting people with a smile. I ran into a couple old high school buddies of mine from the Hill District, so. So it was really great to see them out there and doing what they do. And the administration, you know, the Paducah administration did an excellent job at kind of welcoming, you know, the Vice President through and through. You could see there was a large presence from the mayor's office there, and I wanted to thank him for that, but. But if I could just share one quick, and I'll try to make a brief story with you, you know, that made it the most exciting thing for me about the day was when I was coming out of my house to go to the, to the, you know, event. A 10-year-old boy lives across the street from me, was in my driveway with his mom and Sarah, and she said, Anthony, are you going to see the Vice President? I said, yes, I am. And she asked me to take Quentin, and many of you know him. I know, you know, Madam President, we, you know, helped in the tragic loss of his father and, you know, securing him a place up in Banksville for the wake, and, and I know Councilwoman Gross had met him on my porch, and, you know, so he's just a good kid. And so my mission became to get this kid in front of the Vice President. So I was happy to see when I arrived, the first layer of security was my Chief of Staff Blake Plavchak, and I said, we'll get you through here, because I didn't know if I could get him in, you know. I said, we'll get you through the first layer, so. But from there to Secret Service, I explained, you know, you know, this was on a whim, you know, we're trying to get Quentin in here, and so, so, and you know, we found him a perfect seat, just in hopes that he would get to meet her, and wouldn't you know, the Vice President, by the way, did a fantastic job, fantastic speech, checked all the boxes, but what impressed me most of all, wouldn't you know, right after the speech, she went, made a beeline for Quentin and a couple other kids. There was probably only four or five kids there, you know, so. So he's got pictures and television interviews, and it was really, truly life-changing for him. Needless to say, the ride home was nothing but excitement and fun, and I was telling him, I said, you don't understand. I said, this is not famous, this is world famous, so. So, you know, he's excited to share his stories at school, and, you know, I wanted to thank again the Vice President. Most impressive was her message to the, to the kids there for the summer camp, her message to the teachers, and her affection she showed towards these kids. I couldn't have been more thankful, so. So thank you, and that's, that's my story, and making this young boy's day made my day, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Seeing that, I just mentioned, Councilman, I heard about this story about you taking him, and I do know, I, when I first found out about you even liking kids came from him, and he told me how great you are, and his mother told me how great you, you have always been to their kids, but since their father passed away, that you have been really even, even more amazing. And so I'm very thankful that you, that you took him, and that, but I had a call from a grown man who was, who was practically crying because it meant so much to that kid and to the family. So I want you to realize that you touched a lot of people that day, more than just him. And I just want, Councilman O'Connor, look at my husband bought at a flea market. It says, O'Connor, he said, he told me to give it to you, so it's sitting here on my desk, I forgot. But anyway, I just want to say, Councilwoman Gross, we do have a meeting today, and I'll call you about it shortly. I hope you can participate. We're meeting about the polls with the superintendent. Everything was just confirmed yesterday evening. Council, we have, I invited the superintendent, he agreed to attend, and Chief of Staff Gilman included two foundations and Port Authority. So we'll have a meeting with all those people, including the administration here, so we can try to figure something out. So I'll send you the link, and I'll talk to you about it shortly, but I do want people to know that we are still working on this whole poll, swimming pool issue. Anything else for members? Is there going to have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Have a good day, everyone. Thank you.